This actually is Thursday afternoon, it's just after one o'clock, May 30th. It's a special meeting for the Cadillac City Council, and four of us have made it here, which is great. I'm gonna call it to order at this time, and ask everyone to rise if you would please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please, Chris.
Mayor Malama?
Here.
Abson?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Here.
Here. I assume T.I. is teaching today and is not able to make it. Appreciate everybody else coming in on short order. Approval of the agenda would be next. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hopefully not, since it's a special meeting. Mr. Petya?
None, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
And is there support for that as well? Could we have a roll call, please, Chris?
Mayor Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Motion carried, other than the picture. Public comments are next. Not a lot of public here at our special meeting today, but if anyone would like to address us at this point, it is requested that the comment time be limited to three minutes. Mr. Cooper is going to be involved in our discussion, I assume, Mr. Petya, so he doesn't need to get up at this time. So I'm going to close public comments, seeing that no one's come forward. Proceed to the city manager's report, Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. First of all, I apologize, this item should've been on our last council meeting's regular agenda, but it was missed, and I was not here dealing with some personal issues, family issues, prior to that. And so it's my fault that we didn't get this on our regular agenda, but I do appreciate everyone's ability to come out and meet this afternoon, very much so. And I know, Mr. Cooper, what the road commission does as well, he has a deadline coming up, I believe tomorrow?
First.
Yeah, the first. So Bruce is gonna provide some additional background, and after we talk here, I would like to ask members of council to step away from the dais and come around so we can look at the maps. But basically, what we're here today to discuss is whether or not the boundary for the urban boundary map, which is based on census data, should be revised to expand to incorporate newer areas. The state of Michigan has required changes that we don't have any option of either accepting or rejecting, and given that we rather recently had a new census done, this is an opportunity for the road commission to also recommend the expansion of the boundary. Basically, it would be locked in stone until at least another ten years from now. What this does, and again, Bruce will be able to provide, I think, perhaps a more clear definition, but it provides the opportunity for roads that are designated within the map, within the boundaries of the map, to be eligible for funding. And Bruce, what is the name of the grant? You might wanna...
It'd be a small urban grant area, so eligible for that.
Okay, eligible for small urban grant funding, thank you. The amount of money available, I believe, is typically about $375,000. Eligibility seems to be, every couple of years, you can get a grant designated for our area through this funding source. And as Bruce's council communication notes, the, you know, expansion, you know, the expansion of the boundaries would essentially create greater competition for the same pool of money. And so that's essentially what has to kinda get balanced out here, is whether or not we want to allow that expansion of the map to occur or not. And if, you know, and if we don't, then it would limit the funding source opportunities for the road commission to only other grant opportunities that they already may have, versus if we were to allow it, this would add then another funding source opportunity that they could use. But it would then, of course, create greater competition for the city to use those same pocket of funds for roads such as Lake Street, which is one that we've identified as one being that definitely needs to be replaced. So I don't know if you wanted to have any other opening remarks, or if you thought you'd kinda walk people through the progression of the maps from the left to the right?
I think that's the best thing to do, is to be in front of the existing maps.
M.DOT, are they present today and involved in this at all, or what's their role?
No, M.DOT's not present today. Their role was to identify and basically mandate the expansion of the map per their, per the census results, and that's identified by, like, the pinkish-brownish color on the map that you'll see once you come on. We don't have any say. Actually, that's what, you have a smaller copy here. I don't know how well it's gonna come out, but we don't have any say in that. The only thing that we have a say in is the green areas. And again, Bruce, I think, will be able to walk us through visibly by looking at the map.
There's our city limits, and then it looks like there's a line, a green line drawn around it in a bigger fashion, goes around Lake Mitchell, for example, and it has the letter C.D. in it, and various open space areas outside the city. Is that census data, I assume, or what are those expanded areas?
Probably easier if we're up there.
Okay, all right. Let's, I recommend we get up there, then. Is everybody okay with that?
Glad you're wearing your pants.
I guess, a little bit of history, yeah, I laid out the original, the original map. Kind of this area here was the urban area, the yellow line. Obviously, the map is smaller and less detailed, but then, I believe, ten years later, M.DOT expanded to produce the urban area, and that showed in all purple here.
That's all, both of these groups, just to, for the record, those both extend beyond our city limits.
Obviously, the extensions are outside the city. Anything inside the city was within the urban boundary automatically, so the expansions are taking place outside the city. You can see there, here from this one, there's more here, there's more around Lake Mitchell.
Okay.
That's just a history of kind of...
A progression. Was there anything outside of the city in the original map?
Yeah, there's a little bit, you know, so...
Is this ten or twenty years ago?
I think this is the 1990s.
So this would've been after the 1990 census, this would've been after the 2000 census?
And both of these were decided upon at that time by staff?
I think, I believe, M.DOT said this is what it is.
Yeah.
And I think this...
We've only recently been able to have a...
So this, this next census...
Me, you, and I?
Staff.
City and county road commission staff, both?
I don't remember having this meeting ten years ago.
I don't either. And so then comes, now comes here, and the census data says, okay, you automatically gotta put this little area in here, and Harvey Hills in here, okay? And their purple line basically shows where it was back in this one, so...
The green line, or the...
Purple line, we can't see the purple. The purple line, the green line is what they wanna expand to.
Okay.
So they expand the area, you know, if you look at the purple line, we have to take this in. So the expanded, the county wants to take this section of Matano Trail added in, I think the last half mile is one. And then, and then this area here going around Lake Mitchell, and then this kind of area, let's say, south of...
All the way to 13th Street.
13th Street, down to city limits, and going to 115. So basically, the expanded areas are these two areas and this area.
Oh, this is the same.
This is the same, yeah. And so that's, that's kind of the history, and of course, the roads that are in those areas are now, if we approve them, are now eligible for small urban funds, right?
Yeah. None of the new roads that are included are anything that we have targeted for use for urban fundings. The roads that we already want to improve are inside the current urban area. What this really does for us is, any roads that we have inside the urban area, we get paid more money for. I don't know what the actual form is, but it's almost double from what we normally would get.
To your maintenance.
Our maintenance funds. So that's what's more important to us, that's ten years of increased revenue if this is improved. Because any of the roads, like I said, the only road that we're shooting at right now is Matano Trail. That's already, that's already in the...
But this is outside...
This is the piece that we're looking at right here.
You're gonna stop it, though? You're gonna stop?
The urban boundary money is where the, that's the only place we've applied for right now.
Not the expanded part?
Not the expanded part, no. We're gonna do that with our STP refunds.
And that could happen in the future, though, realistically.
But that...
Next eight years, or whatever, so...
Well, we're, no, we're gonna redo Matano Trail fully this year.
But the small urban money has, that's still up. I mean, you still have to get approval from...
You still have to get approval for that, yes. But that's the only one, and it's up...
And you're gonna use it for the park that's already in there?
Yes.
But...
This time.
But, you know, once, I understand, once we, if we expand this area, all those are eligible from this point on.
Yes.
Twenty, twenty years from now, when those roads are in need of repair, they'll be eligible.
It's eligible, yes.
So it's probably not as big a deal dealing with funding now, but the future funding of, person has to replace me, Alan, I, probably not...
So the conflicts could be ten, twenty years from now? Or likely twenty years from now. Like I said, we're gonna rebuild that next summer, without, just a small portion of what we'd like to see there.
It'll last about twenty years.
It should last longer than that this time. But I think, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, just, my interpretation of what's being said is that the fear factor, if you will, of the higher competition for the same amount of dollars, with now a larger area being qualified to use those dollars, may not be realized now, or maybe even over the next decade or two. But perhaps, at that point, ten, twenty years from now, when some of these more outlined roads start to be in the position where they need to get replaced, certainly the city is still gonna have needs of having, you know, our roads replaced as well. So then you're gonna have the possibility of longer heads between, you know, the city and the road commission, or the road commission and the city, and swaddling over the allocation of those same dollars.
And the small urban funds are probably the biggest grant available to the city. And that's where we're, a lot of our big jobs have been done with those funds. I think I can list them off, North Boulevard, Lake Street, Oak and Shelby, South and Harris, and the last one we did was along the lake, North Boulevard and Chestnut. So these are, these are half a million dollar jobs with our, with our portion of it in it, that it's, it's where you're getting a lot of your improvements.
So you can see, it's kinda, you know, I hate to, I hate to call it a toss-up, but to one degree or another, I mean, there's the pros, and then there's the cons. You know, the cons is the higher competition. The pros is that you're, you're enabling the ability for another local agency to be able to qualify for a greater, greater compensation on, which will inevitably help you be able to provide services.
Maintenance.
You know, maintenance services, right. So, you know, I mean, how could, you know, I can't say with a straight face that it's a bad, it's a bad strategy, because it isn't. You know, on the other hand, you know, we know that perhaps a decade or two down the road, it could create a situation, unless, unless it's planned, where we develop some form of planning policy between the agencies where we identify the roads and we prioritize, okay, for, you know, grants in the middle of this year, it's gonna go here, for grants in the middle of this year, it's gonna go here. So instead of it just kinda being an informal, you know, hey, who's up and who wants to, who's gonna squeak the loudest, we actually have a plan and a program together where there's this mutual cooperation between both agencies. That's probably what we should do. Then I could see it working out.
Sounds like we're gonna do that.
Yeah, because Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city of Cadillac, I know what, you know, I constantly hear, and I don't, from citizens, about the condition of our roads. And during the day, what is it, nineteen thousand people come into Cadillac and come into our area? And, you know, I mean, I would hate to see that, it would limit us on our ability to deal with our streets. I mean, we have a lot of traffic coming into this community.
The businesses of our roads are abysmal right now.
Right, and that's a concern.
We've only budgeted...
I under, you know, I understand the dilemma that's involved here, but...
We budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for next year's construction, and that's not very much in the condition of the roads we have.
No, we just did approve a hundred and fifty thousand for the, this year, which is nice, something that we, we didn't know we were gonna be able to do. But that's, but you're right.
Exactly.
Right. Yeah, what is it, how many years would it take to...
Hundred.
Hundred years? Wanna say? If you say that...
If we do a half a mile a street a year, that means we got about sixty miles, so that you get to every street every hundred and twenty, twenty years. In the last few years, we've been doing half a mile or less of the streets. So that's, that's why I said, you know, it's kind of a, and I'm sure it's all the same way, not enough dollars to do...
Yeah, yeah.
It's like this all over the state, actually, as far as the share is indicated, they're abysmal, which means terrible, and they're like that all over the state of Michigan.
Well, okay, we probably should get back to our mics unless anyone else has questions here.
And we all have a copy, a much smaller copy, sitting in our places. What does, Mr. Cooper, you have something, Alan, you wanna share? I just shared, our main focus is to increase the maintenance funding.
What do we do to balance, maybe, that the city's getting a smaller Twinkie, or...
Well, yours is, your urban area is already defined, there's no way of sands or butts about that. We're trying to get it included so we can get a more maintenance dollars. You have received the lion's share of the small urban over the past, since 1992. You've probably gotten eighty to ninety percent of that money, so, and you are supposed to, we are supposed to meet and discuss who gets it and when, and it's decided between Transit, the road commission, and the city, so...
Now, these are all of the ones that are...
They're the ones we did, and since the, the last two, what I would say, smaller urban money, the county did, the Boone Road, and then last year, Platte Road, was, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't part of the roundabout, like the Platte Road, Purple Roundabout, nor... So the last two, more or less, you probably said, they...
And how did that occur? Did you have discussions about prioritizing?
We had a meeting, and it was kind of, there's no rhyme or reason, but we agreed that the last group was, it was their share. From my understanding, we still have to get company to understand what to do with 2014.
What is the significance of a yes vote? We would basically be increasing the group that would have at the Twinkie, if we're gonna call that a set of dollars?
Give a little more maintenance per mile, so I think it's a hundred or six miles.
You would just be increasing the number of roads?
Do you increase the number of dollars that you're eligible for, or just increases the Wexford County Road Commission's ability to tap into those and...
They'll be able to tap into the small urban within that area. They'll get a little more dollars each year for maintenance, you know, whether it's, you know, a couple thousand a mile or...
Couple thousand on local roads, and probably close to seven or eight thousand on primary roads.
Could it be, hang on, Marcus, if you can remember, 'cause I won't remember my question, maybe I've just lost it. Wouldn't it just be giving them more opportunity to select different roads, and we'd still stay at the same percentage of, hey, last year was yours, this year's ours, that kinda thing? Or how do we tie it in to have, other than doing a no vote, which I'd like to know what the significance of that is, but isn't there a way to work out fairness throughout this? Mr. Petya?
If I may, and certainly Bruce, or I'll jump in if I, if I misspeak, but it's my understanding that the first part of your question, Mr. Mayor, with respect to the grant dollars, the grant dollars won't change, so you're correct in your interpretation that you're adding additional roads, grant fund, eligible grant funds won't, won't change. What does change is the amount of, and I don't know if it's called a reimbursement L, or if it's called something different, but the amount of dollars that the road commission receives on a per mile basis for maintenance, that would then get increased accordingly based upon the new mileage of roads that are added into the, into the system. But the opportunity to obtain the grant, which is a $375,000 grant, unless, unless the state should change something with respect to that, that's staying the same, that's staying static. The latter half of what you were suggesting, Mr. Mayor, I think is, is a superb idea, which is frankly, I think what we need to do is develop that, that agreement, or that priority list, or that program list, or whatever name we wanna call it, that basically says, okay, you know, here are a list of the roads, here's a, here's their, you know, perhaps, you know, their rating, here's some special notes about how, you know, they, they could or should be prioritized, and sort of the bigger picture. 'Cause I suspect that you'll find, you'll have some roads that are rated really, really low, but there may be another road that's rated perhaps a little bit higher, but because it's part of some bigger program or some bigger plan, it would actually make more sense to have money going towards that road versus a road that's actually rated lower. And I'm sure there's also gonna be some instances where that's not the case, but in any event, Mr. Mayor, I think the development of that kind of a little program where, where it's a little more formal, and there's some framework around it, would, would give me at least some better comfort, if we're gonna be looking at increasing the boundaries, that, okay, there's gonna, there's gonna be an understanding that we're gonna do what we can to try to share the allocation of these dollars, as, as they're really only available every couple of years.
Okay. And a no vote would not allow the expansion?
A no vote would not allow the expansion, as mentioned before, qualifying that only to the expansion as being recommended by the road commission. The expansion being mandated by M.DOT, we don't have any, any say in, so...
Okay. Is there...
So no vote would not allow the road commission to get any of those extra funds for maintenance?
That's correct. A no vote would, would essentially hold them static, hold them where they're at now, and the additional mileage wouldn't be used in the calculation of their maintenance reimbursements.
You don't recognize, or recall that the city had ever voted on something like this? It's always been handled administratively?
That is correct, and as Bruce informed me a little bit ago this afternoon, the, this is the first time there's been the request from the road commission to have the boundary expanded. In the past, it's been by the state, and so it's just been accepted administratively, even with respect to the projects. I don't believe we've, we've gone forward in prior administrations to the city council and approved them. So that's where, you know, in the, in light of the conversations and discussions that the city councils had over the last year or two, especially with respect to the Platte project, we'd said, look, we're gonna bring, you know, all the kinda, all the grants and summits forward. Given that this is connected, you know, to future grant funding, we felt that it would be appropriate to share this with city council.
Might this be the type of issue where we just simply give you the authority to deal with this between today and tomorrow, and you make the decision with using Bruce and Jerry and our, our assets, and maybe think about that for a second? Mr. Cooper?
Hi. This was not brought up by us. We met with M.D.O.T., you were invited. I don't know, were you out of town, or whatever?
I was at it at spring break.
But they sat down with all the entities in this area that had urban boundaries, and they suggested that we do this. And they made the recommendations based on a certain criteria on the top of that map, whether there was public land, Forest Service parks, commercial development, all those possibilities, and to, and what they call a smoothing. Part of that, where it cuts across in there by the industrial park, just to go across, it's called smoothing. It's just to make it so it's not as irregular as what it is now. If you look on the key on the top of the map, it explains all that. That's what we sat down and did, and that's what they recommended that we do. So the guy from M.D.O.T. was standing there, his name is Mike Toth, and we went through this, and he said, bring it to the other entities, which is Transit and to the city. So... Did Transit weigh in? Transit signed off on it, yep.
Now, was that a, why, why then didn't they just put that in their, their recommendation that would've been mandatory?
Their only mandatory part is where the census is. The actual population mandates what is mandatory, but they gave the urban areas the option. There's also the possibility of increased funding, if there is new funding approved by the state legislature for transportation, that urban areas will, will receive more maintenance dollars on top of what they already get. So the larger urban area you have, the more maintenance dollars the city and the road commission will get, so...
What's the, just to clarify, this was the first time the state allowed?
It's the first time we've been asked to do it. I've been manager for fifteen years, and the last census, I don't remember even coming to us to make any changes like this, so...
Are you thinking...
Might be something new by federal highways requiring it?
I was just wondering, I, what I was curious about is, let's say, everybody has this opportunity, that gets them higher maintenance funding, which takes that budget away, does that then turn around and lower the grant budgets? Because if, if we're now putting more in maintenance, they're gonna have to take from somewhere to pay for that extra maintenance.
I don't think that's how it works, not that, not that I'm aware of.
I would guess if they own the potpourri money for maintenance, and you all of a sudden give more per mile, they're probably gonna reduce, reduce the...
We don't know what it will increase us, as far, but we do know that it increases if it's in the urban area, so...
They haven't even told you yet what the increase is?
I have no idea.
So you could be, I mean, it could be a very minimal or a very large...
But it's for ten years. That's the thing. I mean, it'll add up.
Well, I don't think if you put it in there a couple of hours, it may stay in forever.
No, but, yeah, but I mean, that, if we don't get the increase now, that's ten years of increase that we can't... We lose. Yeah, we lose. If I may, just throw something out, if, if council wishes to, you know, direct me to do what I think is best, that's certainly within your purview. If council should wish to weigh in, and if council's desire is to, to approve the expansion of the map as presented, I would, I would suggest that as a part of that motion, you would also direct myself and staff to work out a program with the road commission that we can use with respect to kinda tracking potential eligible projects and developing a mechanism, a timing mechanism, where, you know, we're looking at the most equitable way of trying to share the available dollars so that it doesn't become, or doesn't continue to be as informal, in case a question, whether it's by this council, future councils, this road commission, future road commissions, unless you would disagree that it's a bad...
Sounds like that's what's been done in the past, and it's been done informally.
Yeah, and just try to formalize.
Some kind of an agreement between the road commission and the city.
To me, that seems like a win-win.
Actually, Transit has to be involved in that.
Yeah.
And Transit, too?
And Transit.
But this has to be done by June 1st, correct?
You say that's the only time, I have to, I have to know.
So really, to come up with some kind of agreement, we would really need to have administration and staff work this out, because there wouldn't be enough time, so...
But they don't have to come up with the agreement by tomorrow, but...
Well, no, but at least have that understanding that there will be an agreement.
Yeah.
That's where I'm coming from, because they can sit down within half an hour and probably come up with some kind of an agreement with road commission.
And honestly, as we're discussing on the fly, it's almost like the development of a, of a CIP to one degree or another, that would revolve kind of around this, these grant opportunities. that would revolve kind of around this, these grant opportunities, the capital improvement program.
What is the staff's official position on this request or this matter?
I, I, you know, I can say that I would, I would be in favor of it as long as we could create a formal mechanism such as a CIP, an agreement, something that would, that would recognize how the dollars are going to be allocated down, you know, down the road. And granted, that's gonna change, I think, based upon need, at least having some framework in place that could be, that could be called upon for guidance so that we're not, you know, a year from now, two years from now, we're not sitting around debating, you know, how did this, how, you know, how did this come about? Where did this come about? You know, we can go back and refer to essentially a, a programmed plan or a program budget that can be used for reference. If, if that isn't something that, that would be feasible to do, then I would, I would advocate, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that we probably shouldn't expand the boundaries. Because in light of knowing that down the road, now whether that's 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road, there's going to be this increased competition for the use of those dollars for roads. I would, I would feel uncomfortable in advocating, putting the city in that position short of having some, something tangible to help us get through that period of time when we get there. So I, I know that it's kind of a split answer and I apologize if, if I'm not being as clear as you'd like me to be. But I think I, I could support it if we get a plan in place. The plan would obviously change annually, biannually, however, however often it would need to, to incorporate new projects and new things that come around. Short of having some kind of mutual plan, I would not be supportive of, of the change.
Well.
Bruce, are you comfortable with what?
Yes, please speak.
I mean, you got the experience. You've been here for beginning of time. So I want to hear from you. But are you comfortable with what Bruce is saying? Yeah.
He's doing the math.
With what Bruce is saying, okay.
Can you help explain that our ma, what, what kind of maintenance money do we get for the?
We get the same percentage like they, if they got a mile of street within their urban area, we can get same dollar per mile. It basically.
You might get more per mile because the cities are funded differently. You might, per mile, you might get more if you got more road.
There's this, there's this big formula with the percentage and nothing else. It's really complicated. So how much you actually get is hard to.
Now, would there be any, and I'm just trying to understand this, maintenance money funding, would there any be, any possibility where they have so much funds for maintenance to one urban district and by making it larger, it could lower our, our amount per mile? Because we're expanding that same funds over a bigger area?
They only have X amount of dollars, so if they raise, raise a lot per mile, they have to cut that overall.
I just want to make sure we're getting the full, like, do we do this and find out, or not only do the grants, but do we lower our maintenance funding because our dollars that are going to our per mile gets spread out more?
It's a good question. I don't have the answer to that.
And then, you know, that's another, it seems like that's another area we have to consider is if we start losing funding on that end as well.
That'd be a good question. If you're not gonna make this decision till tomorrow, you might want to call Mike Toth and ask him. Because this isn't just here in State Line.
It's just not having the knowledge of how they come up with, you know, I mean, us as a council.
It seems, and I don't, this doesn't answer your question, council member, but unless, Al, you're gonna say something different, it seems that the road commission is comfortable. And even if it, even if it does change a little bit, that overall would be beneficial, I guess. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Oh, I was talking about the cities.
Oh, no, I know, I know, but.
It seems like unless we approve this, we're at risk of losing some potential maintenance dollars.
That what?
They are.
Yeah, in our region, right. So I would like to see us move forward with this. And I think I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay.
I'm hearing all sorts, seeing all sorts of googly eyes, so.
I, I just, the only protection if, that I request is that we, we memorialize, if you will, as a part of the action.
That would certainly be part of my motion.
Okay.
But I mean, are you thinking of approving it through council or to turn it over to administration to work out the agreement with the council?
Right.
Which way are you going here?
Well, I was gonna make a motion to have that happen, yeah.
Okay. Because not a yes or no.
Well, it would be.
To turn it over to administration to make the decision based upon.
To make the decision? I don't know. I think we're ready to make the decision as long as that, and a framework is put into place. I'm comfortable with moving forward with the recommendation from MDOT for the new urban boundary. With the, with the stipulation that there's a framework put in place that's agreed upon between the city and the road commission and transit that would help us make funding decisions as we move forward.
But that's a.
For prioritizing different projects that need to be done.
Isn't that conditionally saying yes? And as opposed to, they need a yes or no? Or are we okay with the conditional yes? That might be why it would be better to let the administrators work it out. Al's got a board to deal with. I don't know that they would approve it necessarily, probably would. The other group has a board that Mr. Edwards would be approaching. It's not gonna happen in two days or a day. I guess that's, you know, we're not gonna have an agreement agreed upon within two days.
And Art raised, or Councilmember Stevens raised a good point which Mr. Cooper said maybe a phone call needed to be made this afternoon on maintenance.
With the, with the funding aspect?
I just don't, I don't mind going forward with the yes conditional upon the additives. Yeah, but the problem is, is that the yes vote he's looking for? Or are we conditionally, making it conditional, which is neither a yes nor a no?
I think that, yeah, we can approve it with the understanding that they will come up with. I like the word framework on how to move forward to have discussions as they prioritize projects in the future.
And who's gonna decide that agreement? Is that a?
That would be up to the administration of those three.
Well, we can only control our board for, they may wish to be in charge of it. I mean, we can turn that over to administration because we're the board, but maybe doubtful, but maybe one of the two other boards didn't want to do that. And then we have a non-agreement, no meeting of the minds, and our yes is worthless because they didn't follow suit. I have a hunch they both trust their administrators and would follow through with giving them that freedom.
If, if I may add, I believe what would likely happen, whether council came out and clearly said yes, move forward under, under the condition of the establishment of the framework and so forth, or if council came out and said, you know, staff, please, you know, based upon our conversation today, determine what the best course of action is, we would still need to advise Mr. Cooper essentially, probably by tomorrow morning, or, you know, sometime tomorrow, where, where to go with it. And assuming that any information that we would get back from Mr. Toth, it would be that any changes would be negligible, we would likely say, you know, go forward and expand the boundaries. We still run, I suppose, run the risk that the transit authority wouldn't be supportive of the establishment of some kind of, you know, you know, framework documentation, which I, I don't want to put words in the mouth of their director. I would be, I would be surprised if that would be their stance. It's certainly a possibility that they would be adverse to it. I don't, I don't know if, if, you don't think they would. I, I don't think they would either. But I just wanted to, to say it so that if that ever comes out and not.
So what are you saying?
Well, so.
Which way would you?
I, I would.
Is it easier for staff to work out the agreement with county?
I, my, my preference would be to authorize staff to work out all the terms of the, of the framing of a CIP-type document, a plan, and to authorize the road commission to move forward with, with the new map as it's been presented. Those things coupled together, I think, would, would provide us, unless, Bruce, please speak up. If you're not comfortable with that, you gotta let me know, so. But that would happen regardless of whether we were here.
Another question too that comes is, even if there is a, can we tie another agreement with this? I mean, even if we did come out, are they held to that?
No.
If we, if we, you know, let's say there's a different road commission or a group. If we come out and say we're gonna work out future projects, does that, do we have any authority through another contract to say that's how it's gonna be?
I, Councilmember Stevens, I, I don't think so. And that's where I'm trying to stay away from the word agreement. And I was kind of calling it a framework or a plan. More or less, it would be formalizing, short of just having a running list of projects and ideas as they come up, but formalizing, okay, here are some known, known areas and the issues surrounding them and why we need to move them forward. Getting ours out to the road commission, to the transit authority, asking them to do the same. And then having a meeting of the minds with the engineers that are involved in this whole thing to try to plot how, you know, how these projects should go with the funding that's available and the timing and everything else and what, you know, see what makes sense and see how they all kind of fall together, hopefully like a jigsaw puzzle if possible. I don't, but I, I think you're right. I don't think we could strike like a formal agreement that's binding, that's gonna, yeah, so I, and that wasn't what I was referring to.
More of a verbal agreement.
Right.
It's also binding.
Right.
The idea would be have parity, fairness and sharing. So that not all, not any one party is the advantage party. We do have a long, good relationship and trustworthy one with the two entities. This is why, it would've been nice probably to have this five, six months ago, not just last meeting. It still wouldn't have been the time to get the other parties to come up with a side agreement, which would be what we're thinking of doing, or framework, whatever you want to call it. The easiest way probably is to authorize staff to make this decision by tomorrow and to give them a yes and to have them continue with their good working relationships with both Mr. Edwards and Mr. Cooper. And just work out a, a framework moving forward. We do trust them and have not had problems in the past. That's where we get into trouble sometimes, so is to move forward without an agreement. But there's been such a good relationship, I don't see that. Do you see that as a problem, Bruce? They're usually on the same page always. This is the closest I've seen them have a, you know, protective stance, and they should, but there's a way to make this fair and to help the road commission have funding. And they're, they sound very open to it. The person not at the table would be the CWTA. But they rely heavily on their administrator and almost always follow his advice. And he's signed on to this thing already. But those are my thoughts, easily overturned.
I get, well, the, see, I see two things. The one is, the, the one goal is to help give them extra funding. The second goal is to just make sure we're not losing. Your, your first thing said, have the staff make a decision and tell them yes. So, I mean, is that saying we're gonna tell them to tell them yes? Or we're, we're gonna give the staff the authority to review everything and see if there's any adverse effects it could have?
How, how can that?
My only, the hard part is I'd like to see us help them, but I, I don't want to find out that we end up, do we lose funding in a tight budget over time?
Can I just let him call Mike Toth? You do need to do your research. Because if it does negatively affect your funding level, you need to know that for yourself. Because we don't know right now. So if it's too much of a hit overall, I would.
And you, you don't know that either, or you're, yeah.
I'm comfortable.
It increases ours, but if it overall decreases yours, you should know that for yourself. So I, I didn't make the phone call.
And so I was wondering if we expand that to give the staff then, instead of directing them a yes, give them the authority to review and.
The latitude.
And the latitude to decide. It sounds like even their understanding, if, if we find out it's a negative impact, we have, we then have to decide, are we willing to just take the hit to give them the extra funding? Or do we want to see if we can both come out ahead?
Well, I think the idea and the bottom line was that we're both all trying to come out ahead here in fairness. So we're not directing our staff to put us behind the eight ball by saying yes. We have, you know, I'm for just giving it to the staff and let them deal with this and give them authority. They've come to us uncomfortable making this decision. Let's give it back to them. Let them make the decision knowing that they have authority and they're still uncomfortable.
And that, and that's absolutely fine.
It's a way we can hold them accountable.
Well, the reality is, there's not gonna, the reality is, there's not gonna be a road commission meeting by tomorrow or a CWTA meeting to bind their entities to some sort of agreement at this hour.
The other reality too, if I may add, Mr. Mayor, to what you were saying, was the project that Mr. Cooper was talking about with respect to Mackinac Trail. Regardless of any of these discussions, whether this map expansion was here or not, the area that he's looking at doing is already a part of the program. And we're already also looking at perhaps that same pool of dollars to help us out with one of our own local roads. So, you know, the, whether, you know, we end up getting in loggerheads over that one or not, that, that's happening regardless of whether or not we expand or don't expand the map. So I don't want that to give them, to cloud any, any thinking of this thing, so.
So you're comfortable having us just turn this over to staff and you do your good work between now and tomorrow at 5 o'clock? Bruce is okay with that? Mr. Petcher? No, sorry. They must have a good union. Must have a better union.
And you're saying they make the decision. And they, they're making the decision.
You're good. We're just gonna hand it over to staff to brainstorm this. You okay? Okay, all right. Would you like to make a motion consistent with that? No?
No, I don't think we need a motion, do we?
No, I, I got your consensus. Do you want to see what you can say something?
So you're gonna make it, you're gonna review everything and make the decision?
We're gonna, Bruce and I immediately adjourning from here, we are gonna get on the horn and try to get ahold of Mike, I think his name's Mike Toth, to see if there's any impact and, and there may not be any, or he may not even know. But just, just to try to see if there's any impact to our maintenance funding levels. And if it's something other than de minimis, then we're gonna record, we're gonna tell Mr. Cooper, unfortunately, we can't, we can't approve this, yeah. If it's, if it looks like it's good, then we're gonna tell him to, to move ahead.
Is that good? All right. No need for a vote. You're good with the consensus. We've had good discussion. Any other comments, questions on this particular item? discussion. Any other comments, questions on this particular item? This is all we can talk about today. All right. Thank you for, uh, that discussion. I'm gonna move down to public comments. Anyone wishing to make a comment? Again, requested time is up to less than three minutes. Hearing none, seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna close public comments, go to, go to the order. Anyone with good of the order? Just pass on, um, hopefully this is not inappropriate, but I just had heard that the three townships were meeting at six o'clock tomorrow night, Cherry Grove, and that would be Selma and Clam Lake over sewer issues.
They're reviewing their, uh, they had a review done by Wade Trim, to look at their maintenance of the system right now around Lake Mitchell. So, as far as our knowledge from, we just had a meeting today, is the, the purpose of that meeting is basically for the townships to, um, review that, and then also potentially look at scheduling some maintenance projects
Okay.
for the next four or five years.
We, we had a meeting with all three townships this morning, got copies of the company that we.
All right, I just was letting everyone know. I heard there's a meeting. That's all I wanted to bring up. Anybody else? Any good of the order? Thank you for letting me get that scheduling item out there, and for the background as well. Anything else from council? If not, it looks like the magic words are, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at this time. Meeting adjourned. Thanks for coming.